It being time, I now call the Gardner City Council's Monday, March 17th, 2025, meeting to order. The Assistant Clerk will now please call the roll. Counselor Brooks.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Dernalowitz. Counselor Hardern.
Present.
Counselor Heath.
Present.
Counselor Haglund.
Present.
Counselor Kuzinskas.
Present.
Counselor Matt.
Present.
Counselor Tisoni.
Present.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Present.
President Tyros.
Present.
Please rise for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we thank thee for bringing us together this evening, inspire us to worthy deeds and sound decisions, and direct us towards the attainment of this city government. We pray thee to bless and protect all the people of our city, to surround and inspire us that we may deliverate in unity and harmony. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of open meeting recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operations of equipment used, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such a recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes. Is there anyone recording this tonight's meeting? No response. We have no minutes of prior meetings. We have no public hearings. There are no communications from the mayor. There are no petitions, applications, communications. There are reports of standing committees. This evening, we'll be taking the Appointments Committee items 11472 and 11485 out of order. Appointments Committee. Item 11472, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Robert Oliver to the position of City Engineer for a term expiring January 16th, 2028. Counselor Heath.
Thank you, President Tyros. The committee met with the City Engineer, Rob Oliver, and the mayor earlier, well, last week to discuss the appointment. This is a reappointment, as Mr. Oliver has been in this position for three years. Before this position, he was the Assistant Director at the DPW. He brings a lot of expertise. He's assisted in updates around the city, including the water and sewage, along with helping the properties around the city with helping get the tax rolls. Other notable projects he's involved in, including the Route 140 bike path, the main water piping, the Uptown Rotary Project, that's just to name a couple. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment to be certified.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, second by Counselor Haglund to certify the mayor's appointment of Robert Oliver. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11485, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Corey Hasselman to the position of Veterans Agent, Veterans Burial Agent, for a term expiring January 16th, 2028. Report from Counselor Heath.
Thank you, President Tyros. The committee met with Director Hasselman and the mayor earlier today to discuss the appointment. This is a reappointment, as Director Hasselman is completing his one-year appointment. Prior to serving this, I'm sorry, prior to serving as Director, Mr. Hasselman served as the Assistant Director of the Veterans Service for the city. The department is one of the city's regional departments, providing services to the veterans of Gardner, Ashingham, Westminster, Princeton, and Ashby. The general laws of the Commonwealth also require that all veteran services, service officers be veterans themselves, in which Director Hasselman is a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. He also served as Chair of the Garden Veterans Council, coordinating the city's various veterans events. This is a three-year appointment. The committee voted unanimously to recommend, therefore I move the appointment to be certified.
Motion made by Counselor Heath, second by Counselor Kuzinskas to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. We will now take a brief recess for the Assistant Clerk to administer the oath of office. Please raise your right hand and then repeat after me.
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Robert Oliver.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of.
Perform the duties of City Engineer.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my abilities.
And the best of my abilities.
If you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Aye.
State your name.
Aye, Corey Hasselman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of.
Perform the duties of Veterans Agent and Veterans Burial Agent.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my abilities.
And the best of my abilities.
We'll now resume the agenda with the Finance Committee. Item 11513, an order seeking to designate Christine Tree as a special municipal employee for the property located at 153 Elm Street for the Safe Roots to School Project. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the council, I move the order be authorized.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Matt to move the order be authorized. Is there discussion? Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this order relates to the next item on the easements. City Solicitor Pusiteri has a potential conflict of interest for the aforementioned property 153 Elm Street, which requires the hiring of another attorney to handle that property. Under Rule 14, while the council states an item must first appear in a committee, also allows for that to be waived, that requirement, assuming that everything, you know, all elements have been satisfied. There was a request in writing to the clerk, who attained the assent of the council president and the committee chair. Again, all of those elements were satisfied. In anticipation of her services, Solicitor Pusiteri had invited Attorney Tree to our Finance Committee meeting last week, where her services on this particular property were discussed. She did also note for us, which was appreciated, that the particular property could end up back in front of us. As it's part of the easement package, it also happens that the house is pending sale right now, and so depending on the timing and on our filings, along with the sale, the owners may need to be changed, and then we'd have to reapprove the property as well, but that will be to be determined. So I, again, move the order be authorized. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haglund. Is there further discussion?
I just wanted to offer, I'm a salary adding practice for 30 years. I have provided services to the city of Pittsburgh and served as assistant solicitor at one point in time. I've provided municipal services to the town of Ashingham as well. My practice does include a real estate and particular zoning portion, as many of you know from my prior appearances before this council. I appreciate the opportunity to work as special counsel while still maintaining my existing zoning practice, and there is no conflict involved in this particular property. Happy to take any questions, otherwise just wanted to offer that to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction and brief description. Are there any questions or discussions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11503, an order of takings for easements temporary and/or permanent by eminent domain for the purpose of the Safe Roots to School Project for various properties located on Elm Street, the area of Temple Street and Cherry Street. Counselor Brooks.
If, inasmuch as I have one of the properties, it's being considered for the taking, I need to recuse myself, and I would just ask that somebody come get me when the discussion is complete. Thank you.
Sure, we can arrange that. Thank you, Counselor Brooks. The clerk will note that Counselor Brooks has recused himself. Counselor Matt.
Thank you, Council President. This item is for the 20 easements. The addresses are all listed in our packet. That will be taken temporarily or permanently by eminent domain for the purpose of the Safe Roots Project, which is to improve the sidewalks on Elm Street between Cherry and Temple. The Finance Committee was unanimously in favor, so I make a motion to move the order.
Motion made by Counselor Matt, second by Counselor Haglund to move the order. Is there discussion? This vote will require a roll call vote. The Assistant Clerk will now please call the roll. Counselor Brooks has recused himself. Counselor Cormier.
Yes.
Counselor Hardern.
Yes.
Counselor Heath.
Yes.
Counselor Haglund.
Yes.
Counselor Kuzinskas.
Yes.
Counselor Matt.
Yes.
Counselor Tisoni.
Yes.
Counselor Thibault Munoz.
Yes.
President Tyros.
Yes.
Nine a's, no nays, one recusal. Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Item 11510, an order authorizing the creation of an Economic Development and Finance Manager for the position of the, for the position for the Community Development and Planning Department, and approving the job description for said position. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you again, Mr. President. And through you to the council, I move to recommit this item with the Finance Committee's recommendation to the Economic Development Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Matt. Is there discussion? Counselor Haglund.
Thank you again, Mr. President. So the Finance Committee had met on this item last week. In regards to this item, I think one of the key questions for us was if this was a really true merge of the two positions, and apart from some minor clerical duties, it is. It comes with the recommendation of Director Stevens, Director Morris, and the mayor, all of whom support it, and I think the hope really is to help strengthen the department by consolidating these duties, and to really trying to bring in a highly qualified candidate to serve in this position. I think also in Director Stevens' time with us, as he's sort of assessing things, and what he's seen working and not working, this comes as part of that from him as well, and a hope just to streamline things, make things more efficient, and make the office run more smoothly. So while the Finance Committee had no real further concerns around it, it does seem pertinent to give the Economic Development Subcommittee time to, I'd say, review and study this item. It does fall in their purview. They do have more direct sight over the department, the day-to-day operations, the structural pieces, any recommendations coming from the director himself, and so where, again, it fits with their purpose, I make this motion. Thank you.
Further discussion, Counselor Kuzinskas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate this referral, being the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I think it's a good idea. I think it allows the council to be more thorough. I appreciate that we already have the Finance Committee's rapport, and, you know, in watching their meeting, you know, they've done their vetting of the position. I think it's completely appropriate to refer to the Economic Development Committee and our oversight of the department, and that this is a very big change for that department, so I look forward to reviewing it in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinskas. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11511, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 171, thereof entitled personnel, to amend Schedule E, thereof entitled non-union compensation schedule, to add the position of Economic Development and Finance Manager. Report from Counselor Haglund.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move to recommit this item to the Economic Development Committee with the Finance Committee's recommendation in addition.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Matt. Is there discussion? Counselor Haglund.
Thank you again. Obviously, these two items are connected, so it seems pertinent if we're sending one, that I should move to send the other. However, with some background, this is effectively the salary that would go with this position. At our Finance Committee meeting, concerns were expressed about the compensation, and if it was sufficient for the duties of this new position. The mayor did report to us that the current proposed salary will match the Assistant Director position, so in that, you know, we had no real budgetary concerns. It also saves the city some money, the way we're doing this. But I think something also worth noting is that, again, these are some changes, I think, as the Economic Development Committee has some more oversight, and if they're going to review the job description itself, they may also want to revisit this package. Additionally, currently, a large portion comes from Community Development Block Grant, and with that money never always being guaranteed, knowing there's some savings, it might be something to look at too down the line, as to whether we can move away from that grant spending and put more on the city's end of things. And so we felt that that was something they might be able to have a deeper conversation about. Again, trying to set up this department to be as successful as possible, and so I look forward to supporting the motion to recommit this. Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Kuzinskas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I appreciate this referral. I look forward to discussing it in committee, as this is the salary piece of the position. I think it makes sense for the Economic Development Committee to also review it. You know, the structure of the department, the budget of the department, we're looking at every piece of it, to just have our oversight part as the council should, and I think that this is going to be a big part of it, considering, you know, it's really two positions, and one with a little bit more, and so depending what we report out, we want to make sure that, you know, the quality of the position and the amount that it is compensated makes sense. So I think it's going to be a really thorough review of the position, and before the council comes to vote on both of these items, and so I do appreciate, again, this part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinskas. Is there further discussion? Again, this is a motion to recommit the item to the Economic Development Subcommittee. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Appointments Committee. We've already taken care of items 11472 and 11485. Item 11492, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Ron G. Darmetka to the position of Member, Council on Aging, for a term expiring January 16th, 2028. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we met tonight on this item. This was sort of a reschedule we did not have for these and the next two items, the write-ups from the mayor. However, he was able to get them for us today, so fortunately, we were able to meet on these three reappointments. In terms of Mr. Darmetka, he's served as the Chair for the Council on Aging the last three years. He is a Gardner resident. He's incredibly active at the Senior Center. I think he attends most, if not all, of their events. Director Ellis was there in support of him. The mayor is in support of this. He really does come highly recommended, especially considering it's a volunteer and unpaid position, and how much he goes above and beyond, and so the Appointments Committee had no objections and were unanimously in favor, so I move the appointment be confirmed.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? Counselor Kuzinskas.
Just one note on the counselor's comments. We will have the write-ups from the mayor before the meetings are scheduled moving forward, so we shouldn't run into that kind of logistical issue, but the mayor had confirmed that we will be receiving them, along with Chair Heath had confirmed that'll be part of the process moving forward, and Mr. Darmetka, as well as Mr. Leone in item 11493, they had, they were at our previous, our previous meeting. They were understandable of the process, so I just wanted to make a note of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinskas. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11493, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Paul Leone to the position of Member, Council on Aging, for a term expiring January 16th, 2028. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We met on this item as well earlier this evening, as mentioned. Again, Mr. Leone is an active member of the Senior Center. He's really excited and enthusiastic of Gardner, what's going on in Gardner. He's become a pretty involved member of our community. He's served in a lot of different capacities in his time with the Council on Aging. He's also a reappointment, as are the other two, and he brings, I think, a great background, a set of experience. He's an author, he's been a reporter, so he has a nice handle on bringing arts and other, you know, activities to that, you know, to that end, to the Senior Center. So the Appointments Committee was unanimously in favor, and I move the measure be confirmed.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item 11494, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Paul Crowley to the position of Member, Council on Aging, for a term expiring January 16th, 2028. Counselor Haglund.
Thank you, Mr. President. One last time tonight. We met on this item earlier this evening as well. Mr. Crowley comes with a really great variety of professional backgrounds and experiences. He's been a professor. He has worked in financial industries, so I think he's pretty uniquely qualified. He brings some great insight and skills, so it really balances out, I think, the Council on Aging in a lot of ways. He was highly recommended, again, by the mayor. The Appointments Committee was unanimously in favor of this. Like the other two, it's a volunteer unpaid position, and all three of them really do go above and beyond, so I move the measure be confirmed.
Motion made by Counselor Haglund, second by Counselor Heath to confirm the mayor's appointment. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Economic and Community Development Committee. Item 11504, a resolution in support of the City of Gardner's application for the FY 2025 Community Development Block Grant Mini Entitlement Plan. Counselor Kuzinskas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to grant the resolution.
Motion, oh, sorry. Second. Motion made by Counselor Kuzinskas, second by Counselor Cormier to grant the resolution. Is there discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. We have no unfinished business and matters for reconsideration. We have no new business. Counselor comments and remarks? Are there any Counselor comments and remarks? Counselor Matt.
I just wanted to do a last public service announcement for the discounted rate of the flower pots that will be around the city this summer. Before the end of March, you can get $50 off of a flower pot. You can contact Katie Oblonsky through the mayor's office. Instead of $200, it'll be $150, and it's also on the City Gardner website. We are increasing our pots to 85 this year, and, you know, this is a great way to sponsor and beautify our downtown area, and you can do it as an individual, a city councilor, a community service organization, or a business, so we encourage people to do so. And lastly, but not least, I would be remiss not to acknowledge my fellow female city councilors. This is Women's History Month, so I acknowledge Counselor Hardern and Counselor Kuzinskas for us being the women on the city council, as well as today being St. Patrick's Day. I just want to pay acknowledgement to the strongest Irish, excuse me, Irish woman I know, who is my mother, and she may be the strong woman I am, so thank you to all the strong women we have in Gardner, who have worked so hard for this community over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Matt. Is there further comments? Counselor Kuzinskas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to do a quick update on the Economic Development Committee. We met on Friday, March 14th, and we received an update from Economic Development and Planning Director Jason Stevens. He gave his monthly update, which we talked about when this, this committee was developed, that we would do monthly, so he had given his second monthly update. It's hard to believe it's already been time for another one. He was joined by Assistant Director Evan Cudmore and Mayor Nicholson, and he updated us on the Rear Main Street project, the subdivision of Compass Lane, Greenwood Pool, the Rome Building on the corner of Main across the street from the Gardner Police Station, and the status of the GRA, and the DOT outreach regarding the RISE Grant, which involves a federal grant involving design of a possible parking garage and downtown ADA improvements. I would strongly encourage the public and the fellow city council members to watch the Echo Dev meeting for the full update. It was incredibly thorough. There's been a ton of work done. It's completely transparent, and Director Stevens and Assistant Director Cudmore have made tremendous progress over the last couple of months. There's clear processes being put in place. Obviously, we talked tonight and voted earlier on proceedings for a new position in that department. I just want to thank them for their work so far. It is a great example of the oversight and best practices of the city council, and how we're exercising those through this committee, and I look forward to what's next, but there's just been, there's a lot of information in that meeting, and I think the best place to get the full update is to view the meeting on YouTube, and also, just a reminder, most councils, commissions, committees of the city are all on the City of Gardner's YouTube channel. It is an incredible tool that we have here, that we've had since 2020, and I know it helps me, you know, get updated on the meetings that I'm unable to attend, but I want to make sure that I'm educated on it and I know what's going on, so that's there, but stay tuned for more for next month.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinskas. Further discussion? I have something this evening. I want to say a few words about the upcoming budget process. As we approach the FY 26 budget hearings, I want to emphasize the critical importance of this process in shaping the future of our city. These hearings are not just about the numbers. They're about the priorities, accountability, and ensuring that every dollar we spend is in the best interest of the community. I want to make sure that the council, and the mayor, and the department heads are all on the same page when it comes to what to expect in this process. In light of the current economic factors, including rising inflation, fluctuating energy costs, and the ongoing challenges of maintaining fiscal stability, it is imperative that we approach this budget with heightened focus and oversight. While Gardner has made strides in securing grant funding and fostering economic development, as highlighted in recent reports, we must remain vigilant in how we allocate resources to sustain these efforts and address emerging needs going forward. Furthermore, there are proposed cuts at the federal level that could have a direct impact on positions and programs at the local level, potentially straining resources and affecting the delivery of essential services in our community. In addition, these cuts are, could be compounded, could compound the challenges we face significantly by impacting the state budget. Nearly 41% of Gardner's budget in FY 25 was funded by state aid. In other words, for every dollar spent, 40 cents out of that was tied to the state budget in some way, shape, or form. That's not including the sometimes millions that we get each year from state grants and other supplemental funds. That should all give us pause as we start to work on the FY 2026 budget. After consulting with Counselor Kuzinskas on the previous budget process, we realized that we, as a council, had, in hindsight, allowed some leniency in the completion of budget narratives submitted by department heads. This was due to the fact that the narrative process, while long overdue, was new to Gardner. By doing this, the current mayor raised the bar and increased the amount of information, the amount of detail, and gave the council more time to review information, starting the process earlier in the year. All of these things were good steps, but we need to continue to raise the bar. So this year, I'm calling for a more thorough review of departmental budgets. Each department must not only substantiate its expenditures, but also demonstrate how its plans align with our city's goals and the economic realities that we face. The importance of the complete and precise narrative cannot be overstated, as they are fundamental to ensuring transparency and accountability, and enable our capability to make well-informed impactful decisions. Such a disciplined approach is essential for directing our resources towards investments that are not only efficient and effective, but also poised to secure long-term growth and fiscal stability for our community. Together, we can navigate these challenges and continue to build a stronger, more resilient Gardner. Thank you, and I look forward to the good work in weeks and months ahead. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer. So moved. Motion made by Counselor Tisoni, second by Counselor Brooks to adjourn after the closing prayer. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those against, no. Motion passes. Motion passes.
Almighty Father. We see this overall. As we adjourn, we thank thee for the opportunity of joy and liberation and actions witnessed during the course of this meeting. Bless the Lord, all who gather here and the peoples who represent who we are, and do thou attend to our common welfare until our next meeting. Amen.